Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, January 25th. The agenda for this evening, 7 o'clock, citizens input. 7:05, there'll be a public hearing. Christina's Fireside Grill for about their liquor license. 7:30, there'll be a public hearing, a transfer of a restaurant beer and wine license for the Mandarin Chef. 7:45, the Board of Selectmen will discuss goals and objectives. And at 8 o'clock, we will go into executive session to discuss litigation as well as review of our executive session minutes. So, Linda, sign the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is dear, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the time being 7 o'clock. Is there any citizens input?
Hey Linda, just on if no one else, this is, I don't think, a item that needs to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
I had emailed you and just maybe if the board can talk about it a little bit.
Sure.
Because I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Is, so I went and, you know, handed out the town citations to our Foxborough's newest Eagle Scouts, Chris Johns and Max Guy. And I think it'd be a great idea if we can corral, you know, these guys or any other new Eagle Scouts, have them come in, citizens input, and talk a little bit about their projects because, you know, as I was starting, you know, to think about, you know, nice things to say when you hand out a citation, I said probably what we've all said, which is, you know, the town's proud of you, it makes Foxborough feel good that these guys will do these things. And it would be actually another service for these Eagle Scouts to do, to come in here and explain it, because I think the folks at home who aren't getting to those ceremonies would like to hear the things they did. So, as a board, are we okay inviting?
Well, I absolutely agree.
Looks like that just as a matter of course.
Absolutely.
So, maybe, I'll ask Sandra if she could send out an invite to those two guys. And yeah, let's hear it. And, you know, they're probably busy, might not be able to make it in, but, you know.
Right.
Why not have the invite?
Yeah, and, you know, we should go back to, you know, welcoming home the guys that have been serving too. I know that we did that once or twice, and then it kinda slipped. You remember?
You know, I don't even remember that. It may have preceded my time on the board.
Maybe it was before you even, but, I mean, we did. So, I think I might talk to Michael Johns about, you know, getting those folks and inviting them to, just welcoming them home. I think it's important, so.
Yeah, and I honestly, I think, you know, on some level, it's like, do these guys really want to come into a Board of Selectmen meeting? But it's just a nice thing for them to do, again, because, you know, I think the town really likes to see people, you know, home. So.
Yeah.
More than us honoring them, although that's certainly what it is, but.
But, right, but, yeah, the whole town needs to be aware and.
Right, so, anyway, there you go. Thank you.
Good idea, good idea. Thanks. Okay, the time being 7:05. Do you want to read the first hearing, Jim?
I'd love to. I have the legal notice for the Mandarin. Does anyone have the legal notice for Christina's?
Christina's?
Just flipping through it, I noticed, there is not one.
There isn't one, okay. Okay, so do we have the folks here from Christina's? We don't have anybody from Christina's here this year.
Yes, I think there's someone who's trying to decide.
Oh, come right up. I'm sorry, come right up.
I was watching him decide if he stood up. Come on down.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, how you doing?
Can you sit down?
Sure.
Okay.
It's probably wise. Kevin's just in the other room at a meeting, where he's been spearheading this. I'd like him to be here.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful to give us some guidance on some of the history.
Maybe wait a little bit.
Yeah, because we can't go.
They just finished. If someone wants to, just go in and grab them and tell them to come over now. Lisa, would you mind doing that?
Thanks.
So, have a seat, introduce yourself.
Okay. For the record, my name is Bob Schelmerdin. I am an attorney. I represent MJ Holding Corporation, Michael Intaucha, Chris Spinizzola. There has been an outstanding issue on payments, real estate tax payments, mostly having to do with Mr. Intaucha's real estate holdings in this town. And as late as today, those payments have actually been made to the town. So, I believe that this hearing is, I'm not sure that we have, there's a necessity to go forward, but I'll let Mr. Pecos speak to that issue.
Okay.
You were looking for the word moot, weren't you?
Thank you.
There you go. Three years of law school, that's what I got out of it.
There you go, maybe moot. Moot court, maybe moot.
Was he right there, Lisa?
Yes, he was coming.
Okay.
I'm not sitting in his seat, am I?
No, no, no.
He'll sit right over there.
But you could sing a song if you like.
Is everybody ready for the snow?
No. My kids are bitter that they have school on Friday.
Oh, really?
Bitter, yeah.
And Friday was the day that they had to get off.
I was actually.
And then they pulled it back and they still have to go to school now.
Oh, they did? Because I thought that I saw Foxborough on one of the tickets, but.
We got the call last night from Chris Martis. I think it was a tape recording, and.
Did you try to speak?
Yeah. I was giving, I was giving him a piece of my mind, and I was afraid to tell the kids. I'm like, better wait until a good night's sleep and then tell them in the morning.
Tell them they gotta get up.
So, let's, yeah, see who runs that house.
See, I had the opposite. I would have said, "Thank you." Seven days, seven days for the kids to go to school is better, so.
Well, do you want to do a couple of action items until, would you mind, Bob?
If you don't mind, that's fine with me.
Okay. The first action item is the Town Council's bill.
Motion to approve Town Council's bill in the amount of $4,083.33.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Pauline. And the first, the second is the resignation from the Foxborough Cultural Council, from Jones Stafford.
Move to accept with gratitude and appreciation for her service.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the request to name a street in the new subdivision at 67 North High Street in honor of Michael McNara.
This, I.
Anybody read, yeah?
Sorry, good. You know, looking through the information that was submitted, I have no problem with, you know, the information or going in that direction. However, I've seen this in other towns that people bring a name forward, and it bumps somebody else off that was equally, or if not more, entitled, I guess I should say.
Right.
So, I guess, is that the case on this, or is it?
Well, I, my only comment would have been that I would like it to go through the, yeah, through the historical Jack Arthur Wetz group, and, you know, put it on their, you know, their radar, so that they can approve it for us. So, I wouldn't want to take any action on it until.
So, would we submit the request to the Historical?
To the Historical Society.
Is that in fact a process, or?
I don't think.
I bet you Sandra knows, but.
Yeah, I spoke to Jack about it today.
Yeah.
He does, I did give him a copy of all the information.
Okay.
He was supposed to be CC'd on it.
Yeah.
I asked him to talk to Kevin about it. Usually, the list does come from them.
Right.
It is the Board of Selectmen's choice as to whether or not you want to name a street and what to name it.
Right.
But we usually go as a recommendation. And then I usually check with police and fire to make sure that the names don't sound like other streets, so that it doesn't cause a public safety issue.
Yeah.
But, you know, my suggestion to the Board would probably be to wait to hear from Jack.
From Jack, yeah, that's, that.
I'd move to post call.
Okay, let's table this then. Thanks. And the Mill Street Preserve and Mill Street Preserve, two subdivisions, open space, land deeds.
This is the one that has the outstanding tax.
Right.
Taxes, so move to, move for no action on that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Pauline.
How about the special permit?
Yeah, and the special permit for Lambs and Road Water Treatment Facility. That's, just letting you know that there will be a hearing at 8 o'clock on Thursday. So, that's more of a information.
Information.
So, we zip right through those action items, and I still don't see our town manager. Yes, Lisa?
Did you see the memo that I wrote to Mark? I said that if you signed it, we would hold it till the taxes were paid, and then we would release it to be recorded once we guaranteed the taxes were paid. So, you don't have to table it right now. You can sign it, and then we'll hold it, she'll hold it, until we release if the taxes then are paid.
So, do you want to?
Unless, yeah, unless there's urgency, if the taxes aren't paid, I'd say no action until the taxes are paid, and then, then we deal with it. So, there's not, you know, who knows when it's going to happen? This could be sitting there for another six months.
Well, the longer it takes, the more they're going to roll.
Kevin, Bob, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I was with the lawsuit commission.
That's okay. Bob is here about Christina's, and we wanted to make sure that you were available to kind of give us the briefing and.
Yeah, the attorney for Christina's appeared today and made payment in full for the real estate taxes due, plus interest, and penalties, and fees. And that was, of course, very good news. Now, and so, in terms of the hearing, the board needs to open it and then basically close it and make no finding, because there isn't a legal basis for you to take any further action now that the taxes are paid. There was a little bit more that I'd like to tell the board, though, because in about three odd months, the next quarterly bill will come up and will be overdue and unpaid if the owner doesn't admit payment. And we'll be right back here having another one of these. So, I communicated that to the attorney today and suggested to him, oh, you're the gentleman?
How are you?
Kevin, Bob Schelmerdin.
It's been that kind of a day, huh?
He did, in fact, communicate this to me.
And suggested that we get together, and I think that meeting's been scheduled.
Yes, it has been.
With John, it is?
Your name? I'm Bob.
Bob, I'm sorry.
Bob.
Bob.
No problem.
Lisa, Sandra, Randy, myself. And basically, talk about what are we going to do moving forward. The reality is, the individual who owes these taxes has some property, is a developer, and has some properties that are fairly well-leveraged, because that's the nature of the development business. He also happens to possess, be the holder of a liquor license, that are very different kind of a business. What's at stake for us is to decide whether to revoke, for the board to decide whether to revoke the license. Now, revoking the license outright might not be the best decision, because while it gives you a heck of a club to get the taxes paid, if you revoke the license, it denies.
Right.
The taxpayer the ability to pay their taxes. So, and yes, there is the further tool that we have, that government has, of selling the property, seizing it, et cetera, et cetera. But what that means is a practical matter, is we get our taxes at a very future date, typically when somebody sells the property and they redeem the tax value, et cetera. So, one thing that we would like to talk about is some sort of a plan that going forward will keep the taxes reasonably current, so that I can put that, and there's two moving parts. There's two parties that have to approve a tax payment plan. First, the treasurer has to approve it, and then, secondly, under the statute regarding tax payment plans for delinquent taxes. But since the board is a licensing authority, you also have to approve any sort of a tax payment plan as a condition of holding a license. Now, I'm not going to say to you with absolute degree of certainty that there is a plan that both you and the treasurer will both feel comfortable with, or that I would feel good recommending to you. What I am saying is the payment of the taxes tonight, redeeming it up to date, well, up to date one year in arreage, gives us two or three months to see if we can work something out and bring, and bring that back to the board, and see if Lisa can be satisfied that it's a responsible plan, using her powers under the statute. So, it gives a little time to work on this.
Do you clarify a statement you just made, that they have brought the taxes, not current, but to a year ago?
Right.
So, they still owe a year's worth of back taxes?
Right. The way the statute reads is, once the tax is delinquent for a period of one year, then the board may act on whatever permit or permission the town has granted. That comes building permits, liquor licenses, basically an enormous array of things, and a very short list of things that we can't impact. Happily, we cannot deny anyone a marriage certificate if they would like to get it. They still owe delinquent taxes.
Or bicycle.
Thank goodness.
Bicycle license.
Or bicycle, right.
Bicycle license.
But most other permits that we grant can be revoked. So, the taxes are indeed still delinquent by one year.
And so, how much is the total amount delinquency? Do we know?
It's, to pay off fiscal 10, which is $40,000 more. Fiscal 11 is probably another $60,000.
So, clearly, one of the analysis that we need to do is to be sure the town does not get upside down, i.e. the value of the assets that we would seize for non-payment of taxes is in excess of the taxes owed. Believe me, we won't let the town get there. In fact, the treasurer is fully empowered and likely will begin tax title proceedings on the properties that are delinquent. And that's, that's the normal course. That's what prevents us getting an early start on tax title processing, is what prevents us from getting upside down, i.e. owning property which is valued less than the taxes owed. We don't ever want to be there, because then you got to go to the Department of Revenue and ask for things that they will just not give, so.
This represents, you said, real estate. So, these are houses he's developed that just hasn't sold, that he's waiting to sell?
Vacant land, I believe.
Vacant land, okay. So, it's not like, unless you're going to sell the land, it's not going to have a quick, realizable cash value?
Unfortunately, and I appreciate, I think Mr. Pecos did a very good job of explaining why we're here, and that the town is really willing to work with us. Mr. Intaucha's really in the construction business, real estate business. He does own the restaurant, and unfortunately, he's, you know, he's, he's very concerned, and he's very sorry that he's not able to bring his real estate tax payments current, much less a year or more overdue. For him, it is a, an issue of, I would say that 95% of the real estate taxes that were paid today, probably 98% of the taxes, of the payments that were made today, have to do with his real estate construction business. The unfortunate for the restaurant point of view, and the ironic aspect here, is that it's not the restaurant and the function center that is, that is finding itself behind the times, because I think the restaurant and the function facility are, are operating very well. In this, you know, what hurts the economy generally can, can benefit certain segments. For instance, the function center, Christina's finds that it's able to book more people, because they're not going to Boston hotels because of the economy. They're staying more local. So, that helps. Unfortunately, the vehicle with which the town, we're, the town is given right now is this liquor license renewal, which occurred in December, but is subject to potential suspension or revocation for taxes that are owed. Again, I think we all understand that the economy has really been very bad for the last couple of years, and it really has hurt real estate. Michael is, Mr. Intaucha's committed to continuing to own his real estate, continuing to develop it. Most of the land that is being taxed is not, does not have a house on it. We typically do not, I've been with Mike now for 19 years, and we typically do not, he does not sell a piece of property until, or build a house on a piece of property till he has it under agreement. So, much of the land is, while it may be permitted through the subdivision, the planning board process, so it's lots in a subdivision, they are not improved. If, once the real estate market turns around, and we're beginning to see that, we're really beginning to see the real estate market turnaround. Unfortunately, that real estate anchor is impacting, and it is not something that Mike wants to come in front of this board. Either Mike or Chris Spinizzola, who's also an owner, they do not want to come in front of this board or any of the board on this issue of delinquencies. It does not help the real estate business, and, and for a restaurant business like Christina's Grill or Christina's Functions, which particularly depends on goodwill, these kind of hearings have a, can have a dramatic impact on the nature of the business, because it's reported in the press. And while the press, you know, reports that it's a hearing on the liquor license, the ironic part is that it's not really a hearing on the restaurant, it's a hearing on the sub-business. So, we have, we, and that's, it's, it's, for us, it's the nature of life, and for the town, you need to do what you need to do. And I, I thank the board, and I thank Mr. Pecos for giving us the opportunity to meet after this, to see if we can make sure that this, if we can get on a, on an even playing field going forward, so that we can at least begin to whittle down that, you know, delinquencies more than a year, which we've done, and also work on it, on, on the rest of the taxes that are owed. So.
The thing is, Bob, is that, this came up last year too, you know, so, but I thought that we were going to work something out with payment plan last year, but, so I think that it's very important that we get on that this year.
I agree with you.
And, you know, that Lisa keeps us updated, as well as Kevin, as to where the, what the payment plan's going to be.
Hopefully.
Because it has to be something.
Right. Hopefully, we're one year further on this, you know, economy shifting around. I think that, I think we're beginning to see some good light at the end of the term, especially going into a spring market, in terms of the real estate taxes, because that's really what's driving this whole.
Now, there were delinquent water bills and delinquent police details at the restaurant. Have those been current?
They're, they're not over one year old.
But they're still.
Not the water. I should speak just for the water.
Okay.
I don't know about details. The details, he's all set.
All set on the details, but they're still delinquent on the water.
Right, but it's not a year old yet.
But that's, that's part of the, that is absolutely part of the mix.
Can you just come to the microphone, please, and state your name for the record?
My name Nick Panagopoulos. I own the Christina's Building. He supports my calculation. I pay the taxes after I collect for these people. He never pay me. I am in court right now. No pay the rent, no pay nothing. He have $30,000 taxes to me, he never pay. That's what I want to say.
We, we are in court. We're working out a settlement. We've had several.
I'm sorry, no settlement, nothing. In the court right now. Three times I entered the court, and went the 10 again. He no want pay rent, eight months, no pay rent, no pay taxes, no pay anything. I tried to help a lot of ways, he no want help. He want his way, he no pay. That's all I want to say.
I, I, without wanting to play this out, because it is subject to a litigation, I don't.
We're not going to get involved with a litigation right now.
Right, okay.
I take my taxes right here, over $250,000. I want collect somewhere to pay, to keep the goal. He tried to make me bad way to make like himself.
Okay.
I, I'll only say that, that I, that's Mr. Panagopoulos's characterization of the current status, and I, and I would, I disagree on some of those points. So, okay, thank you.
All right, we just need to stay focused on this right now.
Sure.
And I think what it looks like, we're just going to take no action, because there is no action to be taken. However.
I believe the correct motion, Madam Chairman, should be for the board to open the hearing and then terminate it without further action with respect to the license.
We are open, because we, we already, we opened it, but.
All you need is a motion to close the hearing and no further action.
Can I ask a question? We understood that we actually didn't have a notice for a public hearing, that this is not a public hearing. So, do we still have something to open and close, if it's not a public?
Yeah, you have to close the public hearing.
No, what I'm saying is, we don't think it was a public hearing.
I'm sorry.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. Don't need the notice?
It's been noticed as far as the posting.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, sorry. So, again, I'd make a motion to both.
Close the hearing.
To close the public hearing.
And then, you don't have to take any further motions if you don't want, or you can take a motion to take no further action up to you.
Question for you. So, there's really nothing for us to actually act upon. We don't have anything that we can exercise power over.
Exactly. The taxes are now redeemed. That portion that was more than one year delinquent, and so the board has no legal authority to take any further action.
There you go.
Linda, but what about, yeah, and there's nothing we can do to say that, you know, this time, really, we mean it?
Nope.
That you will work together.
What you can do is if the taxes.
We commit to that. We do.
The taxes become delinquent in three months roughly, then another hearing would be scheduled if we didn't have a plan to put in front of you, if we're not able to do something. And then the board could take some final action then, and that would kind of be a way of saying, "We really mean it."
But Kevin, I guess.
We can't do anything before then.
But I think the point is, we don't want to have four hearings a year.
No.
Because you just keep coming in the day before, the day of, and pay it up.
The, the, to be honest with you, the worst aspect.
Always good to be honest with us.
I, I, well, to be frank.
Okay.
Even though I'm Bob, to be frank with you, the worst aspect for us of these hearings is the press. For the restaurant and for the function center, that's, I mean, that's, that's the goose that gold, that laid the golden egg, that kills that. So, we will do everything we can do. I don't, I, I'm not sure that it was a liquor license. Was it last year, the liquor license? I think it was just, I don't think it was a liquor license. I think it was a.
The town meeting.
I think it was a little bit different, same kind of issue, non-payment, but.
We had Chris here last December on some of the other bills that weren't being paid.
Yes, yes, yes.
And he made a commitment.
Yes.
To do some things.
Yes.
Obviously, you're correct. And the bad press that this gentleman has provided tonight doesn't help you either.
Sure.
So, we just don't want to see you in three months.
Sure, and I would, with all due respect.
I agree.
I echo the sentiment.
Lorraine? I just want to say, you know, it is unfortunate, the whole situation, that this puts every, all the players in, including the owner of the building. I did receive a call from a constituent, very concerned, you know, we have to keep in mind also, as this is discussed going forward, that it's the livelihood of, you know, potentially 25 or 35 people there during an economy like this, that, you know, there are so many factors that come into play that we as a board have to be very sensitive to, as we consider planning plans on how to address this going forward, so.
Right, and that was, that was brought up last December too, and she made a great case for that, and.
Yeah. But I think, from my perspective, and I was on the advisory committee when this came last year, and it was, it wasn't, you're right, it wasn't the liquor license, but it was the exact same scenario, the same shell game, the 11th hour. Throughout the day, they didn't show up. At the 11th hour, they finally showed up. It wasted a tremendous amount of planning board's time, because it got voted down, because people were just irate that.
Right.
Yeah, it went to that level. It wasted the advisory committee's time. It's wasted a half of our, hour, an hour of our time. And I, you know, you say there is people's livelihoods that, you know, you have to discuss, but at the same time, there's thousands of taxpayers that pay the bills on time, and if you make one exception, then you open up the floodgates. I, you know, I don't see, granted, our hands are kind of tied on tonight, because they did come in at the 11th hour and they paid, but you got Lisa's, her group running around, you know, trying to assess penalties and fines, and the, the check cashed, and that same, and it's the exact same thing that happened last year. So, you know, I'm not, granted, there are people that their livelihoods are in jeopardy, but there's also the landowners, and there's the, you know, so I think the rules are the rules, and if, if it didn't get paid, I would be one for to say, "I'm sorry," and pay your bills, and, you know, we'll hold the license until then. Because, you know, we're going to be here three months from now, four months from now, doing the exact same thing.
We, we hope not.
I have a comment and a question. Comment is, I actually agree with what Jim said. The question is, in terms of the interest that was paid on that, is that a result of the bylaw that we recently passed within the last year or so? You know, did we have a charged interest before?
That interest is the real estate interest for non-payment of the real estate bill, 14%.
Nothing, okay.
We can charge anybody.
Okay.
But I would like to assure the board, we are. But I would like to assure the board, we are starting tax proceeding to protect the town. On Thursday, we'll advertise, which is normal protocol that we do. We'll advertise for non-payment of taxes. In two weeks, if it's not paid, the town do a tax taking, which we will put a lien on all the properties, there's twenty of them, we'll put a lien, so if a house does get sold or a property does get sold, we will be the first paid. So, I've done that to protect the town on that side of things. So, we will get paid one way or the other, but now we're protected by the tax lien.
Okay, is there a motion to close the hearing?
I think I already did.
Paul made that, I'll second it.
Yeah, he made that one.
We get a second? Larry, second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, hope to not see you very soon.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it. Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, and the time being seven thirty, we have a public hearing for the Mandarin Chef. Come right up.
And this one, I do have a legal notice.
Yes.
Just one thing, Madam Chairman, members of the board, as you know, we do not put the Cory check in the packet, but it did come back clean.
And this is a legal notice. The Board of Selectmen, welcome.
Good evening.
The Board of Selectmen of the Town of Foxborough, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138. Will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and eleven, at seven thirty PM in the Andrew A. Gala Junior Meeting Room, Forty South Street, Foxborough, Mass, on application for a transfer of annual wine and malt beverage license, restaurant license for Lin and Zhao Inc., doing business as Mandarin Chef, thirty-four, Mechanic Street, Foxborough, Mass, oh-two-oh-three-five, manager Guang Lin. The premise is Chinese restaurant with three exits, two restrooms, building is handicapped accessible. All interested parties are invited to attend. Board of Selectmen, James DeVellis Clerk, and this published, this was published one time on January sixth, two thousand and eleven. Thank you.
I just need your name and address for the, for the record, both of you.
Okay, hi, good evening, everybody. I'm Guang Lin. I'm, my address is, right now, living in Branch Tree, Twenty-Five Gromers Avenue. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrew Yehco. I'm the party girl of Attorney Chris Coleman's office. Our office is at one-twenty-eight Lincoln Street in Boston, Massachusetts. Sitting next to me is the proposed manager Guang Lin. He has more than five, six years' experience in doing waiter at the CK Sitron Restaurant at, well, the, in Massachusetts as a waiter. So, he, he have experience in serving alcohol. He has a knowledge and also he has already sign up to the TIPS training classes. Yeah, if I remember correctly, the class will be take place by end of the month to provide him further training, to make sure he have sufficient skill, knowledge on serving alcohol. And for the business proposal, he, he will keep, you know, basically the menu, the, the style of the restaurant, the hours of operations, the capacity, everything to remain unchanged. But he will consider to bring in some more different type of item into the menu after he has been doing there for a while, understand what the customer needs, he will, you know, try to do it better than the previous owner.
Okay, so, this is just a personal question.
Yeah.
Steve, who is there currently, is he no longer going to be there then, or?
No, he will, I don't know why he's his friend, but he, after he sold the restaurant, he will be no, no more related.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yes.
Some might say we're gonna keep Steve and work with us because we are friends.
You are friends? Okay, good, because Steve is a big friend of Foxborough.
I know, I know.
Okay, so, that doesn't have to be on the record.
I want to keep him stay there, work with me for a while, I think, since no, for right now, it was only one day or two days.
Try, maybe it's not...
Yeah, because I, I hope he can help me. I, I hope he can help me something, you know. So, everything, I, I will according on the customers' situation, school situation, we're taking, right now, for a while, we're gonna keep the same thing, remain the same, like, everything.
Okay, great, great. Okay, so we'll begin questions.
Shall I start?
Sure.
Okay, so have you had a liquor license before? Is this your first time?
This is my first time.
First time, okay. So, your experience to date has been, I'm sorry, as a waiter?
Yes.
Okay, and when would you take over the liquor license? When would this occur?
Depends on, at once we got, maybe so soon.
Okay, all right. So, what has been your experience in some of the problems you've seen with alcohol service? Have you, any, like, what are the top two or three problems you, you've encountered, or has it always gone smoothly, serving alcohol, young people, drunk people? How's that work?
Yeah, sure.
On ID is very important, first step to serve alcohol.
Right.
And if there are any problem with the customer, some people trying to make some problem, I, I will recommend them to call I-111.
Right, but what's been...
Paul, could I just ask that we have the manager answer the questions as much as possible as opposed to the attorney? Because while you know all the right answers, we need to make sure that this person who's not owned a restaurant before, not had a liquor license before, is gonna have the experience necessary to do it well.
Sure.
So, if nobody objects, I'd like to have him answer as many of the questions as possible.
The only one problem is my, my language is a little bit limitation, so I want her can translate, translate something for me, and I can answer everything.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we want you to be comfortable.
Thank you.
So, yeah, feel free to translate. So, if you could just help me out with your experiences, with any problems that you've had with customers, young people or people who've been too drunk, like, how do, how do you handle that? What's been your experience?
Yes, my, my experience is, if, if young people come in, the first thing is I have to check her, his ID anyway, right, and if make trouble, I think I can call the 911 for protection for every people in the restaurant, I think, if make trouble.
Have you had that occur to you in your six years where you've had to call the police because of young people or, or people who've drunk too much?
Let me translate.
And just one time, yes, I have been through because it's, and, because I, I'm working closely, and the town is very, very attention for the liquor license. Sometime they call the young people coming in and then pretend, pretend it's like, like a customer, but we always keep, I happen one, one, one time, now we called, I, we called 911.
Oh, okay, there was trouble, okay.
Yeah, because he drink too much, too much, because the, the people come drunk in the other restaurant and then come in again, and drunk again, isn't it?
So, so I, I guess what I'd like to say is, we would encourage you, if you do have problems, to do call the police. I mean, we would expect that, and, you know, certainly, people do drink too much, or young people are gonna try to be served, and it's really important to us as a board and as a town, that, you know, our licensees, you know, act upon it and keep us safe. It's, you know, such an important safety issue, and, you know, that, that's what we find important. That, that's our utmost concern.
Sure, yeah, sure.
So, that's what I want to share with you.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask, so if we approve this transfer, will the TIPS training be completed prior to the approval by the commission? Okay.
That was fun. I just wish you luck. I mean, there's a process, seems like you're going through it. I wish you luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I wish you the best and, you know, take, take as many tips from Steve as you can, because he sure has won some hearts in Foxborough.
I've been there for several times also, because we are, we are all friends, so Steve, he want to take a rest.
Well, he's got a little baby now, too, so they can have some fun with that.
Yeah, that's why.
That's good, that's good. Well, I wish you well, and just to echo Mr. Mortensen, we do take alcohol very seriously, so just stay on top of anybody who comes in there that, that wants. I mean, it's, it's, it's not all alcohol, so it's just, you know, malt and wine, but, beer and wine, but you're still gonna get those kids that are gonna try, you know, so you're gonna stay on them, and the rest of the staff is, is, is TIPS certified too, so...
Anyway, I will take my responsibility to do everything for safety and everything.
Great.
The only thing I would add is, and we've said this to other restaurants that have come before us in the last year, we've had problems in the past. Recently, we suspended someone's license, but then we suspended it for twelve months, assuming that they do every, we suspended it for three days, but then we suspended that for twelve months based on no further violations. They do everything that they said they were going to do. And we made it clear to everybody in town that the next violator that came before us was gonna have the book thrown at them. So, it's important to know, especially for someone who doesn't have a history of the town, has not been here before, first restaurant, that that's what we mean when we say we take it seriously. We've said, we have worked with the restaurants in town, we set a precedent the last time, and we said going forward, this is a clear message to everybody, so, just so that there's no misinterpretation there. We take it very, very seriously, and if there's a violation and the police chief reports it to us, you'll be back here at a hearing, and, and the board has a policy on how we'll handle that.
So, I would just say, hopefully I won't see you here again.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Lots of folks tell us that.
Linda, I'm sorry, two more questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry, is it, how do you pronounce your name?
Guang Lin.
Guang, so your customers, it's gonna be?
Guang, this is my first name, it's G-U-A-N-G, Guang.
Guang, okay.
Yes.
Second question is, are you gonna be there when the restaurant's open?
Every day.
Okay, that's, all right, thank you.
You want a motion to close?
Is there any comments from the visitors? No? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Is there any other further discussion on closing? All in favor? Aye. Five zero, Pauline.
Motion to approve the transfer of license to Mr. Lin.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Five zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Foxborough.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, you will. Yeah, you will. Okay, and next is goals and objectives. Do you want to start off, Laray, or what? I, I don't know, my only comment on this is, I would still like to have a separate meeting for this. It, it just seems like, you know, we can spend more time if we have a, a separate meeting for it, and the discussion seems to be more lax, you know?
Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, we should do that separate meeting, but I was also gonna suggest, I really like how this is so detailed as to the status of all the aspects of each of these, and I thought perhaps that our regular meetings going forward, we could take just one item and have an update, and how these status are changing as the time goes by, and just, you know, to discuss the details again as a way to communicate to the public what is being worked on behind the scenes by everyone in the town hall and on our board, and, you know, by Kevin. And then, again, that gives us the opportunity to kind of make tweaks as we go along through the year. But I, I think that the way you've put it together is really helpful. I think we, we need to really go get into the real nitty-gritty of it at a separate meeting, because it's just a lot.
I mean, it is, it's, 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 it's great, it really is, and, and I know that you'll be updating us with your reports and everything too, so...
Yeah, what I'm, what I'm gonna do, once you approve this, I'm gonna add a field out here, which is status report, something like that, or comments or whatnot, where I can, you know, every week I can change these pending's to complete, and then put some, some kind of a note out here that is a further adjunct to what I'm doing. And also, there'll be notes about some of this in the, in the town manager's report. And I apologize, I haven't had time to write one for you in a week or two, but this is the time we own, we're doing the budget, and there's just not a lot else going on but the budget and whatever crises of the moment happens to occur. One cautionary note, and I certainly don't want to discourage the board from going into this as deeply as you like, that, that's wonderful for me, in terms of feedback. We do have a, something of a practical issue in that, because we didn't, I didn't start to work for you till well into the fiscal year, and we didn't, weren't able to get all this done with everybody, get all that feedback, and then dump what I think you can see is a fairly extensive body of work. These are the goals through June thirtieth. So, once you adopt these goals, they go back to the departments, and the departments all break out their components, and they each develop their own department plan, just like this, for the year. So, of course, we would like to get that done before we get to June, because it'd be hard to do a work plan and only had a few days left to complete, and of course, I'm being a little silly here, but...
Of course, what you'd put on the plan, you would have already done, probably.
Right, exactly. So, we do need to give it some attention fairly soon, I think, because once you're done massaging it, then, like I say, I've gotta redo whatever you do, and then get it to the departments to burst into their pieces, and that's gonna take a couple-week effort. As a practical matter, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be touching this thing for three weeks anyways, because that's the remaining amount of time for me to get my budget to you, so we got a little bit of time.
Would you consider, because of when you came in, to make the goals a calendar year set of goals as opposed to a fiscal year set of goals, so that your leadership team has the bulk of the year to kind of put these into effect?
Sure.
You know, when you look at eleven a highest and seven a high, there's only so many things people can do, and, and the time is now down to five months, so I, I would ask that, you know, you've heard the board talk at a high level, and I think these all fit into the things that we've generally talked about, so I don't know that there's gonna be lots of significant changes, just minor tweaks. But I, I would say that I agree we could, we could spend some more time in, in an off-site meeting. I think having an update on a regular basis is good, but I don't see where you need to wait until we put a final seal on it to get your department heads already working. And, and by making it a calendar year, it, it allows them to really look at this in a reasonable timeframe. I'm concerned with eighteen of the items on here being either highest or high, that you just, they're just not gonna get done, and I don't want to put something on someone's goals that we know aren't gonna be achieved. So, if you have basically eleven months left to, to accomplish it, you'll be able to, to refine a plan that ultimately you and your leadership team will want to be held accountable to, as opposed to, well, yeah, we agreed to it and we, it was nice, but we only had five months and we didn't get to half the stuff.
I, that's a great idea. That's a great idea, because then if we get this done in the next few weeks, then we're talking about ten or eleven months left to get it done, which is typically what we do on a fiscal year basis. We do it in July and August, and then we'd have it for the rest of the year. So, that's a great idea.
And what you could do if you wanted to, is as we get to the spring, you could then think about what else you would refine this and carry it through to the end of the next fiscal year, so it could be a, you know...
So, it would then be coincident with the fiscal year cycle.
Right.
Yeah, that, that, that would work great. That would work great.
What I like about this is, when I came on, there was, there was an Excel spreadsheet with goals and objectives from the selectmen, and it was somewhat static because it was at the selectmen's table and things would come and go. What I've seen you do with this, you've actually sent it to us. You took our list, you met with all the department heads, you had department head meetings, met with the staff, you had your list, and you melded it together. And I see this being emailed to us and going back, so it's not, although it says, you know, for the, for the selectmen, it's really for the, the town is, is having their input into this, and it's, it's, it's moving every month, and things are coming and going, and I, I agree with Larry, don't wait for us, because you've got a process that is running, and, you know, there's, for the people at home, there's thirty-six well-thought-out items with sub-items that are constantly fluid and moving, so I'm, I'm very happy with it. I agree with Linda that if we sat here and went through with the thirty-six items, it's not fair to us, because we'll be going to one in the morning, and I think we need to focus on it separate, you know, at a separate meeting. But, but maybe we could take one item, a meeting, and just kind of...
Just have a overview update type of thing.
Yeah, sure. As a practical matter, I think what Larry and Laray both said is, is true. This really is a composite of what you folks have already said you wanted to have, and it's been expanded, because we get a lot of input from the departments, which is always the way this happens, you know, we, we are six people who have lots of good ideas, and you folks have a very good idea of what you want for this community, so you have lots of ideas, and then you ask another thirty people who have great familiarity with the town, and they generate a lot of other ideas, so it's not surprising that the document gets this big, nor is it surprising that... So it's not surprising that the document gets this big, nor is it surprising that, to the great extent, it already reflects what you said you wanted. The interim steps, by the way, one cautionary note, what I try to do is make this document real, so it breaks down into steps, so that I can tell you if thing, you can see readily if progress is getting made, you can see things where progress is not getting made, and you can say, hey, Kevin, we see that really not a lot has happened on upgrading town hall technology in the last two months, what's up with that? It's also the case that some of these steps, as we begin to implement these things, are going to change, because what we're gonna find is that something that we assumed today was the case is gonna alter as we pursue that goal. And so what I'll do is I'll add and delete, and I'll show you that, you know, what's happening on here is this thing. So this is a very live document. And one other thing, you are going to have other things that you want worked on. Now, this is already a very ambitious list, as you can tell. So, the cautionary note I would offer the board is, as we go through the year and something else comes up that you want done, that we look at that and, and the board consciously say to itself, okay, we want this done, where does it fit in here? And likely, with a plan as ambitious as this, we do some new large body of work, something over here, you know, it's, something, something has to give way somewhere. But I hope this is, you know, this is something that really is useful, so that when you look back, six months from now, a year from now, eighteen months from now, this gives you a tool to A, know exactly where you've moved the town, and B, a tool that you can use to evaluate me, because I will be using the component pieces of this to evaluate the department heads. And that's really, at the end of the day, what this is about.
Right.
Now, Kevin, like, the last item came up last week when Mr. Haydecker came on, and he had some concern about the town report, so we voted to have that strong enough to go into the goals and objectives. Someone from home wanted to track this as well. You email it to the board, you email it to the department heads. This is, is or is not on the website? If someone wanted to follow it?
It isn't yet, only because it's a draft. So, we, I had planned, once the board finalized it, to put it on the website. I don't, I don't like putting drafts out there, because then people assume that's a final document, and it begins to take on a life of its own, and then you change it, and people saying, well, why'd you change it? Well, it was a draft. I didn't see that. So, put it on once when it's all done. If you want me to put it on as a draft, I'm happy to.
No, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, you know, we get so busy on our schedules, and this sometime might fall by the wayside. If someone's at home, sees it, and they're going through it, let them question, why is it number seven address? It's been sitting there for a year, so I think the, the more it's out there, the more things get done.
Sure.
Because it, you know, it gets embarrassing when it's not done and nobody, you know, nobody follows up with it. Let's either take it off or get called on it and get it done, so.
Now, so, so that I'm clear, does the board want to have, like, a workshop meeting on this at some point? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I'll work with the chair to figure out when that works.
Yeah. And we usually have it televised, too, so Frank will, will let Frank know.
Okay, great.
You know, again, Linda, up to you, I think, but, in the terms of televising, I wonder if this one's better not being televised, just, you know, without it being televised, I think we can be, it'll still be a public meeting, but I, I think it just might be a better discussion without any cameras. Just my view, I mean, not pure logic, but I, I, I think people work better with, oh, cameras sometimes.
Then we, we'd need to let the public know if that's what we're gonna do, so that if folks wanna interact with us.
I, I would even, well, of course, yeah, it would be a public meeting, and if, if you think it's a big deal, maybe we can have on the agenda, you know, weeks before, in a regular meeting, discuss whether to be televised, because I, you know, if people really find, find it's important, you know, who am I to say, don't televise it? But I have a feeling it's not gonna be a highly watched program, and I, again, think we'll work better.
I think the school committee actually does it offline, don't they, Larry?
We have, we have done it in a, in an offsite location within town, and, and, and made it open to the public now. In that particular case, one of the citizens who videotapes every school committee meeting, regardless of the fact that it's on cable, videotaped it and put it out for everybody to access it, so in essence, it became available. The one thing that, that, you know, by videoing it, what it, there's two things that can happen from that. Number one, Charlie Masses on show, he's already had, I think, you on once, is that correct?
Twice.
Twice, okay. And I think that helping people understand our goals and objectives and kind of where we stand on that, because, you know, we've, we've got the high school project, we have the library project, we've got now this. We had the debate last year between level funding and level service, so I think there's gonna continue to be a lot of discussion around, what are the goals, what are the objectives, what can we afford, what can't, what can't we afford, et cetera. And so having that kind of stuff publicized or televised helps give the, the taxpayer at home, maybe not only just information, but maybe motivation to come up and spend. As we said it, after we set the tax rate, and some people complained about the tax rate, when you looked at it, it was very simple why the tax rate went up. It went up because the voters approved the high school project, and it went up because town meeting approved level service as opposed to level funding. And those that were unhappy, were they one of three hundred of the ten thousand registered voters to come and speak? There's only so much we can do. If you don't come and vote, then it's hard to complain. We can do the best service we can by making the information available, hopefully motivating people to come and share their view, but if ultimately you allow three hundred people to make the decision at town meeting, then you're gonna get the outcome of town meeting.
So we, we can discuss it ahead of time when we do that.
Yeah, all right.
And then I just editorialize. I'm usually, I am a skeptic of goals and objectives, just by being a veteran of, you know, corporate America for twenty years. But this is actually going pretty well. I'm actually pleasantly pleased. I think this is a great list and, you know, good document. Usually what I've seen with goals and objectives kinds of initiatives are, they just kind of peter out, and, you know, you're embarrassed, like, what happened to the goals and objectives? And I don't think that will occur here, given this group of people. And then the, the other thing that I usually don't like about goals and objectives is the, there's ninety percent of the work is updating the document, as opposed to the real work, and I don't think that's gonna happen here either, but, you know, sometimes you make lists of lists, and then you have to do lists of lists of lists, and it's like, oh, can we just do the work?
Right, right.
But again, I'm pleasantly pleased, actually, with this process so far.
I agree, I agree.
Well, I, I'd also, I would just add to that, that I, I think that it, it should be clear to people at home that Kevin is a person of action, whether it be the status report that he has shared publicly, whether it be the work on the DPW. He hasn't come in and said, give me six months to kind of get a lay of the land and decide what we're gonna do. He has been a person of action, and he's dug right in and, and worked with his department head, so I think we, this is, is, is further evidence of the fact that we know the work's gonna get done, and that people can hopefully be, be held accountable at all levels.
It's just a big agreement fest today.
Wow.
You're, you're very kind, and I appreciate that, as I, as I always will, and, and I will also very quickly add, because I'm very proud to do it, that I've got outstanding department heads that I work with, who, the reality is, they did the bulk of the work here, and I get to come up here and show you the fruits of all that labor, but your department heads, and a number of board and committee people, too, contributed very heavily to this, and they, they did masterful work, I think, to the extent you're pleased with that, I'm happy. Just be aware that there's a lot of work that went into this by a lot of good people, and it's, it's a pleasure working with them. I keep saying it, I'll keep saying it. I'm not blowing smoke up anybody's nose. I really am having a good time working with these folks. I really am.
That's good to hear. Okay, so, I would entertain a motion, you got it written down someplace?
No, but I think I can do it.
You have some action items?
We already did.
Already done.
Oh, sorry.
Wow. While we're.
That shows what I get for showing up late, huh?[1721.12]